Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 14th, 2022 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I have an announcement, a safety announcement. If during the meeting, an emergency should arise, please exit the council chambers in an orderly fashion. Make a right, go down the hall and down the stairs at the end of the hall. If for some reason that exit is blocked, exit the council chambers, make a left-hand turn, and then a right-hand turn, go to the end of this hallway and down those stairs. If you need assistance, we'll be happy to provide it to you. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. Thank you. Do I see David up there? I do not see David. Since David apparently can't make it, I will ask everyone to take a moment for silent meditation or prayer. Please stand now and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. And just for everybody's benefit, Mr. Boda is on Zoom, and he will be casting his vote from there. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the February 22nd, 2022 work session minutes, the February 28th, 2022 council meeting minutes, and closed session minutes, and Resolution Number 3158 approving the appointment of Kevin Schertz to the Salisbury-Wakomiko Planning and Zoning Commission for term ending March 2027. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. We have two items on the agenda this evening for award of bid. The first item is RFP, stands for Request for Proposal, Number 22-104. It's the LiDAR imagery collection. This was as a request from the Department of Information Services. The scope of work is to include mobile LiDAR and imagery collection services to obtain data related to street condition and sign inventory. The proposal was posted on January 10th, 2022. Proposals were opened on February 10th of 2022 at 2:30 p.m. We did receive six proposals. The highest ranked vendor was GPI Geospatial Incorporated from Columbia, Maryland, at a total cost of $142,990. The accounts noted in your packet are funded with those particular amounts.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'm sorry, just one more. My fault. I apologize.
Just one more. The second one is for ITB, Invitation to Bid, Number 22-121. It's the Park Water Treatment Plan Aerator Building Roof Replacement. This was made as a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development. This would be for all labor, equipment and materials, and incidentals for replacing the historic slate roof and copper gutters. The bid was posted on January 22nd. Bids were opened on February 24th at 2:30 p.m. We received three total bids. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Alden Bailey Restoration Corporation from New Jersey for a cost of $118,800. Both accounts noted in your packet are funded accordingly.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
I do have one. Is that historic, considered a historic building?
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, it is. Well, it would be lovely to have a historic slate roof on my house. You can see by the price why I do that.
Yeah, I was just looking at the price, and I figured that it has to be, well, it should be. It'll be, it's a beautiful building now, it'll even be nicer when we get that done. So that's all, that's all the questions I have. I'll call the motion then, now that we have read both. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize.
I will, that's what I'm gonna do now.
Didn't know if you saw my text.
Yes, I have, I have my note, but I brought it in the wrong place. Kevin, thank you very much for volunteering for this. I know you've been on it before. Have you been on it before?
Yes, I was a planning commissioner in Chesapeake.
Great. I saw that in the, in your memo, so welcome. I will sit, maybe you'll sit next to me, so we'll have, we'll get to know each other a little bit better. But thank you very much for volunteering.
Thanks.
Okay, we will now have a presentation of the ordinances, and our attorney, Ashley Beauchamp, is not here today, so we are pleased to have Laura Haye from the same office go through the ordinances. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2713 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, and I think Mrs. Gregory had it. Ms. Haye?
Thank you. This is ordinance Number 2713, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section 13.16 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Sanitary Facilities to add an exemption for facilities owned or operated by the City of Salisbury for the purpose of providing temporary housing for homeless persons. This is a second reading. There's no changes or additions since the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Haye. Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2713 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2713 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2714 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory made the motion. Ms. Jackson seconded.
This is ordinance 2714, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury establishing a special revenue fund to be known as OSP Fund for the purpose of accounting for opioid settlement proceeds received from the state of Maryland. This is also a second reading. No changes or additions since the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Haye. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2714 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed, or was I just too quick? Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much.
He's a little delayed.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2714 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Haye, appreciate it. That concludes the items on the agenda this evening. I will now open the floor for public comment, and first up, we have Mr. Ted Powell. Right there, yes, please.
When was the last time Mill Street was paved? Nobody knows? Well, I'm a county resident of Wacomet County, and if it's say 15 years, you're talking about a lot of taxes, how come it's not been paved?
Ms. Glance, would you like to make a comment?
I mean, it's in bad shape.
It is, and it's on the, I know it's on our list to be paved.
Now, somebody said, because you have to dig the street up, put all new pipes and stuff down?
Yeah.
So, I mean, say for 20 years or 15 years, I mean, how much tax money is that over 15 years they're buying in Wacomet County? Where's that money gone?
To the 110-year-old pipes we had to remove on Main Street, to the Fitzwater Street, to, and go on and on and on. It's just that we're doing it in the order which the prioritize the roads.
So they're, they are gonna do it now?
Yeah, yes.
When, when are they gonna do it?
It's in our capital improvement plan, but I can't tell you without looking.
Well, so something's gonna keep be putting off on the back burner to?
We'll do, we'll do.
It's never done, or what?
We will do it as soon as the, as soon as it comes up on the list.
So how long is that gonna be?
I have no idea.
Well, I mean, why, why do you, you take taxes out of me then?
Yes.
If you have no idea?
Well, first of all, that we didn't, we will get you.
I mean, where's that tax money going?
It's going for all the improvements that we've made in the city. I don't know if you've noticed.
Yeah, I noticed Main Street stuff, but you keep putting.
Fitzwater Street?
Yeah. Well, Mill Street's in pretty bad shape.
Yes, it is.
And, I mean, my son-in-law's got business on there, which he's, and I did this on my own. I volunteered to come here and say something. So if, so you talking about within the next year, or what? So do I get rebate on my taxes?
Now, we have other things that we're doing that they'll be put to good use.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Shirley Hall. Is that correct, I hope?
How? I'm here about what you are proposing to do on Ann Street, the tiny houses. There's nothing wrong with that, because we have homeless people. Some of them are homeless by choice, and some of them are not, need places to stay. And I'm not against that. That's not what I'm against. So let me clear. It's not what I'm against. But one of the reasons why I feel like we've jumped on, you have jumped on the tiny house, okay?
That's, that's better, yeah.
Is because beautifying downtown, a lot of the homeless men have found places to sleep at night where it's a little warmer. And I privately have seen it, and know this is a fact. I feel like if some of them haven't, hadn't taken residence downtown, that's being beautified, this would have never came about so fast, because it's been a problem in Salisbury since day one. Now, I understand Marine Road was one option, but nobody wants it on Marine Road, and that's a fact. And I'm not gonna tell you how I found out my facts. So you have other properties in the city of Salisbury besides Ann Street. If you wanna give homeless people shelter, you may have to ask for volunteers to be there at night, or you may have to pay somebody. That doesn't matter. But not Ann Street. As in a crime, there's prostitution of men and women, there's little children that's picking up some of these habits, because the mothers and fathers have to work at night, and you get the best babysitters they can, because babysitting is so hot. You have shooting in that area. It's only gonna make it worse. Now, I don't know what you plan to do about the water for these little places, but community like us, bathrooms and showers, that's inhumane. When you go to the bathroom at night, you'd like to wash your hands. I mean, that's terrible. And then you had a picture of the tiny house in Texas. It's nowhere like what you are proposing in this article. Now, there are other communities, got big yards, got, maybe they can cover a swimming pool. Put one house there, and one house there, and let them be a shelter for the people at night. I don't think they're gonna want to do that. But see, Ann Street is my backyard. I'm tired of what's going on in the black communities. We'll call for the police to come next year and you down. We don't get much help. So why are you gonna put it in a fenced area? Makes no sense to me, not unless I develop all times overnight. I don't want to see it in my neighborhood. But did you consult the churches? We got a couple of churches in the neighborhood. You got that building on Church and Isabella, that belongs to the town. Fix that up. Yes, they are homeless, and these homeless people have dignity too. What you are proposing to put them in is worse than what you put the people in on Nellamere Road at the jail. Do you have no sense of dignity? I know the councilperson in my district has notified nobody, and I didn't expect her to, because she never does notify us about anything, although I have called her from time to time, and I stopped calling, because it takes her so long to get back to them. But I wanna thank Ms. Jackson for speaking up, and that's not because she's a black woman. It's because she is a compassionate woman, and she knows the fight. And it won't be only blacks in those tiny houses. Oh, yeah, there'll be some white people there, if you wanna call them white. But they put it in the paper, the brown and Latino and Haitian neighborhoods. Third world countries? Is that what we're living in? Are you carrying us back to what Russia's bombing?
All right, can you, can you just summarize what you?
This is what I, I want. I want to know. Did you notify any of the churches in our community?
Yes.
Which one?
I know the mayor's has spoken with, and I've spoken actually with the Christian Shelter.
Did you get a meeting so you could have a community meeting? Because if you had somebody from one of them churches, we'd knock door to door. And always, I'm a little nosy, and always, I usually get notified. It's what I want you to think about before you go and put water there, and just putting water there is not enough. I know you don't wanna hear me, that's why you asked me, is there anything else for me to move on? But this is something you need to know. You don't want it in your community. I don't want it in mine.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you state your address for the record, please?
200 Holland Avenue.
Mm-hmm. I just wanna make sure this is correct.
Right around the corner from Ann Street.
I, I know that. I was just making sure it was correct.
All right. I'm quite sure you know me.
I do.
That's why I came up here today.
Well, thank you.
You need to rethink this thing, because we're human beings. This is not the third world country. And I got a great nephew that's growing up in the area. What is he to see? Enough is a done. Give us black people, Latinos, Haitians a break. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll now have a call on comments from the administration and the council. Ms. Glance?
Mr. President, I just wanna see if anybody online has any public comments. There's a couple of folks that just.
Oh, okay. Any, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment? Please identify yourself.
I can't hear it.
Whoever has the iPhone, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I don't think, he muted himself, so. And they're gone.
They're gone.
Okay. Yep. I think we're, we're good on.
Okay.
The only thing that I wanted to share with you all is, you should have gotten an invitation from Chris for the Here is Home press conference next Monday. You'll get it if you haven't, at 11:00 a.m. at Johnson's Retreat. Andy, is that right? Development off, off Nellamere, Parsons Lake, Johnson's Retreat?
Yeah, we got it. I just got it.
Okay. Monday at 11:00 a.m., we'll, we'll make sure we send it out again, but should have had that. We will be sharing final numbers and looking forward at, as to what the Here is Home project and all of the applications that came in, and what that means for the city moving forward. So looking forward to share that good news with everybody, so.
Councilman? Mr. Boda?
Sorry I was late, but I was listening on the way from Eastern, and I made it. I didn't get a ticket, so. It's good. You know, I'm very supportive of Here is Home from everything we've done as far as promoting growth within our city and helping everyone from the least of those to those who are looking to move to the city. I know there's obviously some controversy about placement of, of these individuals who are going into the tiny homes, but what some people might not realize, if you went 100 feet from your front door or back door, there are probably someone sleeping closer than you think. I think this ultimately helps give a, a place where we can provide services, ensure that they get the services they need, get to appointments they need, and other resources that are available, available to them. And I think this will help them get from the place they are to this place, and then hopefully to the next step, which, which is moving towards on their own employment or, or whatever that, that they need. So, you know, and maybe there's some more conversations around the community that need to be had, you know, and I think all of us are willing to have those. So with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Today, this evening, I would honestly have a lot to say, but I would say this. The lady that just spoke, I understand her plight, I understand how she feels about it. I mean, and I do. And we must understand as well. It's not in our backyards, it's in their backyards. Like I said, I have no problem with the tiny home project, but I wish we could have actually just got another location. I've worked with homeless for 12 years in my church. Love them. Do anything we want for the homeless. Still do for the homeless on my own merit. But some things, I think, I'm, I'm saying this, I just think that the community itself should have known what was happening, just like they did the Lake Street Playground. The community needed, should have known that that was being placed in their community. The representative from that community should have known and not had to have people call me on the phone and tell me, and ask me what's going on, and I didn't know. This is my point. Reach out to these communities and speak. Even though they don't come to these meetings, we still, they still have a voice. And the simplest thing that we could have done was just walk through the community. I would have helped. Walk through the community and ask these people how they feel about such things that are going on, and that will be placed in their community, instead of just putting something in the community and not saying anything about it. Because I'm, and I'm just here to give the example, Jack. If it were put in your community, I know that your, the residents in your community would have wanted to have a meeting, or would have come to this meeting and spoke up, okay? It didn't happen that way, but I still think that we should go out in our communities when we decide to do things of this sort, and let our community know, even if we still gonna do it. Let's hear what they have to say. Let's hear what they have to say, because they do have a voice, and they are, I'm not gonna say all of them are voters, but they are voters, and we work for these people. Everybody over there is not a renter. No, everybody is not a criminal over there. But there is a lot of crime over there, and there's a lot of unreported crime that goes on. I just want you to, next time we do something like this, let's, let's be a little bit more considerate. That's all I ask. Let's be more considerate about the people that we work with. And I know for a fact that we have been, but when it comes to stuff like this, we need to move a step forward and do more, more of an observation, more of a community effort. We really do. We need to. And I'm sorry, I, like I said, I agree with the tiny homes. I do know they need to be put somewhere, but I just don't feel as though they should be put in there. I just don't, for their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
A couple things. In regards to the tiny homes, the residents seem to have a lot of misinformation, for one. I understand, and I appreciated hearing her concern about the location, but I, for one, am a, a councilperson that if you call me on the phone and you're yelling and cussing me out, I just end the phone call. Other than that, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory?
Yeah, so I am the councilperson for that district, and I know for a fact that nobody has called me, and if they have, they've never left a message, they've never shot me a text or anything. So I'm gonna put it out there right now. You can easily reach me. The information is on the city website. I am very responsive to constituents when they reach out. I pride myself on that, and it disturbs me that someone thinks that they have tried to reach out to me and clearly have not gotten the correct information to reach out to me. So I put this forward, that if you want to sit down and have a discussion about it, I haven't, you know, had any negative feedback from it, but if you'd like to just sit down and discuss it, come discuss it with me. I've actually been homeless. I know what it feels like, and I would like to have that conversation face to face with you. So if you have a problem with this, come call me. I will talk to you. I can't, I can't, you know, track every single person down, but you know where to find me. So come find me. We'll talk.
Thank you, Michelle. I would like to make a comment as well. Whatever legislation we've passed since I've been on the council, there's always a group of people who don't like it. And I think that we, as councilpeople, have an obligation, and maybe we didn't do a good job in communicating most of it. But I will tell you, we all had the opportunity, and we sat down and we talked about the reason that it was put there, especially versus Marine Road. The reason was, and I remember it distinctly, was because the services.
The reason was, and I remember it distinctly, was because the services that are gonna be handed out and handled by the one person who's gonna be on site there are close in walking distance for any of the individuals who wanna take, avail themselves of those services. That was the primary reason that I was for it, to be very frank. And I'm not sure that, April, and I respect what you said, but I'm not sure that my neighbors in my, in my development would be totally opposed to having it if there was a space near them. So, I, I don't know how you can make that statement, that you're assuming that people in certain areas don't want it. There, it could be said for a lot of the things that we've done, like bike paths, like beautifying and redoing the city downtown so that we don't have the flooding that we used to have that hasn't been, that has been ignored for 110 years. So, I think that before we break ground, there's gonna be more information that's gonna be public. We've all seen, all of us sitting at this table have seen the initial drawings, and I repeat, initial drawings. And we all knew that there was gonna be water, and there was gonna be showers at this place. And if someone calls and says they're concerned about that and say, and say that there's no water and there's no place to clean up, they should be corrected, because it is there, and it will be there. And also the fact that it'll be one location where they will have someone to go to as a point of contact to get what services they need, and they're not all gonna need the same services. And that's gonna be housed there as well. So, I think to, to get all up in arms about where it is and what it's not gonna do, let's talk about what's going to be, what's gonna happen and the positives that are gonna come out of it. And I think when they see the final product, people are gonna be very similar. Everybody remember how many calls we got for the traffic circle? How was the worst and most stupid thing that they've ever seen? And what do you hear now? Wow, what a difference. I don't mind people having an opinion, and I don't mind them expressing the opinion, but we have to do what we believe in our hearts is right. And when I vote, I vote because I think that it's the best for everybody in the city, not just in my district, not just in Mayor's district, everybody's district, and that's how we vote. So, I would encourage everyone to keep your eyes open in the, in the briefings from the, come out of the mayor's office about things that are happening in the city and why they're happening. And if you do have questions, you're more than welcome to come and sit and talk with us. If you're in District Three, you can call me if you have a problem in your district.
Can I ask you something?
No, I'm, just let me finish, please. The last thing I wanna say is, please pray for the, our friends and the families in the Ukraine. It's a disgrace what's happening over there. And I pray that somebody will do something soon, because it hurts to go, and I, I can't even watch it on TV anymore. So, please, please say a prayer for all those people. April, you may now.
Jack, when I said, and I think you misunderstood what I was saying, I said, if it were your community, your community would have come out, or your community would have been notified in some way about what was happening, or been briefed about what was going on, if that were put in their community. That's all I said. I never said that your people would not have agreed to it. That's not what I said. I just said that your people would've came, like these people didn't come, these people are not aware, and they didn't show up, or they didn't come, or they, they don't know, they don't have the knowledge of what's going on. That's all I said. I never said your community would not agree on it. I know your community would have come forward. All I said. So, saying that I said something that I didn't say, that's not what I said.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else for good of the order? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.